Okay, we'll call this meeting the order. First thing, still approve the agenda.
We'll do approve with the nation's.
With additional. Okay. We have a second on that, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Close? Any citizens here that want to be heard other than what's on the agenda? Okay, then we'll move on to payment of bills and vouchers.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, the first thing on the regular agenda then is the planning commission process to recommend change of animal units definition in Kate County land development ordinance. Just a little prelude to that is that the state has one thing out ordinance on what an animal unit is. Our county says that one pig is one pig, one cow is one cow, whereas the state has a different thing. And what we're looking at, what this thing we're doing today is possibly looking at that we would conform with the state as far as animal units, because they have a different standard. And then once you go over so many units in your feedlot, it all depends whether the county, the soil and water conservation district will inspect you, or whether the state MPCA will inspect you. I think it's one of the differences.
Mr. Chair.
Yes?
From my understanding, we're not taking action on this issue today, is that right?
Correct. What this is, is it's concerns regarding what the planning commission talked about last Tuesday.
Okay, so the issue before us is?
A non-action item at this point today.
To discuss it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. With that, I see Mr. Blake was on the agenda here. Did you want to speak to that, Mr. Blakeway? Do you have any thoughts on it that you want to express? Okay, come on up to the mic, or you can come up here. Come up here and say. Probably before we get to Mr. Blake, did you guys got any questions on this that you want to discuss on this?
I want to hear first.
Very good. Okay, let's go for it.
Tim's going to come up here too. Our planners will be up here.
Morning.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, if I could just make a comment. I was not at the planning commission meeting last week. I had some family obligations. I don't think what's under discussion here today is should we or shouldn't we adopt the state animal unit numbers. Today is a question of who should do the public hearings. In the 30 years I've been here, there hasn't been, that I recall, there hasn't been an amendment to the county development code that hasn't gone through public hearing at the planning commission.
Just before you go, if you say who should do the public hearings, the public hearings concerning what? Concerned the animal units, right?
Concerning the change.
The change and the ordinance.
Change would require a public hearing.
Very good. Okay, go on.
So I think the question at hand is where does that process go? And like I said, in the 30 years I've been here, I don't recall one issue related to the development code that did not come through the planning commission at public hearing, and then a recommendation was made to the county board. And if the county board required to have a hearing, they had a hearing on it. The recommendation came from planning commission, county board, county board makes the final decision.
Chair, so if that's a process maintained, the county board could still have a public hearing over the bugger when you have?
Right. County board can have as many hearings as they think are necessary for the issue.
Mr. Chair, can I just briefly kind of explain the process that took place? So at the planning commission meeting last Tuesday night, there was a citizen to be heard, Mr. Baer, who presented the concern to the planning commission about discrepancies between the state definition and the county definition. And from that presentation, there was no public hearing, from that presentation, the planning commission made a motion, a second, and passed to recommend the change to the county board. Now, at this phase, before any ordinance could be amended, there would have to be a public hearing at the county board level. And what I believe Tim is saying is he believes, and then the history would support, that the public hearing has always happened at the planning commission level.
I guess that's what I was going to get to.
Okay, sorry, I stole.
No, no. I'm glad you're explaining that.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Okay. And so I think the question for this board is, I mean, we have to have a public hearing. You cannot change a county ordinance without a public hearing. And the planning commission made a motion, a recommendation to this board, and it certainly could happen here at the county board level. The planning commission, it was set out for them that they could, they had a number of options. They could make a motion and recommend to the county board, they could set it on for further discussion at a later time, you know, they could act as the planning commission deemed necessary, and it was their wish, by motion and unanimous vote, to send it here. But you, as the county board, would have an option as well. So if you want, if you want the public hearing to happen back at the planning commission, you could certainly do that. If you want to have the public hearing here as a board before you vote whether or not to change, because it is ultimately this board's decision, whether or not to change that definition. So Mr. Magnuson is right. The question is where does the public hearing happen? And that's, I believe, what Mr. Blakeway's concerns are as well.
I'd like to hear from Mr. Blakeway, his concerns, and then we'll discuss.
Okay, I got one more question before you. No matter what we do, whether the county, whether the planning commission, whether our board does it, what about Gooseberry Township? Don't they, they also have an ordinance as far as how many, what are animal units? So don't they have to change, if we change, do they have to change?
No.
They can still have their own things. They have to hold a public hearing too, then?
No, unless, unless they're addressing to change it, then they hold a public hearing. But if they're not changing anything, they wouldn't need to do it. There could be two separate, just like there was a separate definition between the state and the county, and they weren't the same, there can be a separate definition between the county and the township, and the township can be more restrictive.
They can only be more restrictive.
They can only be more restrictive.
So, so if, but, but going to the question that was just asked about, what our chairman asked about, a township that now has a ordinance, if the counties were to change to be more restrictive, theirs would automatically fall then under the county's?
Well, ours is changing to be less restrictive.
Okay, but I'm just saying, well, if it were, if it were to be more.
Oh, yes.
Then the townships would have to.
Automatically adopt. Yes.
Adopt our, it would just automatically fall that way, if we were more restrictive.
But we're, the proposed change that the planning commission heard is less restrictive. So that's why we can move ours if the county deems that appropriate. We can't be more restrictive, well.
Than the state.
Right.
Less restrictive than the state.
You can't be less restrictive than the state.
Correct.
And the same thing with Gooseberry. It can't be less restrictive.
Correct.
So no matter what we do, Gooseberry still has to do their thing. Yes, Mr. Blakeway, go ahead.
Kind of learned a lot more about this in the last two days, because I mean, I just heard this true rumor that Hitterdall Hogs was, had expansion plans in, you know.
Yes.
Or planning to expand. And back in whatever, 2006, I believe it was, where they applied for a conditional use permit for, on the 2,000 hogs and 1,000 weanlings. And as I understand, and now, I think I've seen this outside here, and they can either way, I think, unless it's, I'm not clear on Gooseberry, if they could still, if they stuck with their rules, probably he couldn't expand. But, and the animal unit thing, I'm going to leave that up to Tim and the planning They've been good neighbors, but when this was permitted without any type of odor mitigation whatsoever, I know he's been adding some additive to the pit. But I get some pretty bad winds from the southeast once in a while, and if it gets doubled, which is what the plans are, animals, it's gonna, it's got to get worse. And I'm just hoping that some, something can be put in place for odor mitigation.
Okay, but your concern right now is whether he doubles his size or not because of this odor and stuff like that. But our concern today is whether we change animal units or not. It's really too difficult.
Well, I would prefer to just leave it the way it is, myself, but.
The concern is the process, right? Is that, if that's what's been forward to me, you were concerned specifically if we, if process was skipped at the planning commission, am I correct on that? The open, right?
Yes.
Because there are clearly concerns if we were to change things, and I think that's what I'm hearing from you, is they've been good neighbors, but you want to make sure that we're within proper parameters. And so is it, is it your hope that this would go back for discussion at a planning commission level, or that there be an open hearing at this level? You were on the planning commission at one point, correct?
Correct.
Correct. Is it your experience that that would be something that would happen at a planning
I haven't really given that much thought. It's whether it's.
That's been the process, Jenny, from what we've heard from Kim.
And is it necessary for us to change that process? I wouldn't.
I'm just going, because I was at, present at that meeting, and it seemed as though, because final say laid within the county board, the planning commission wanted that discussion to be had in front of the county board, Jenny, am I correct?
Yeah, I think, and Tim and I somewhat, we've talked about this a lot, and I think we have two different interpretations of the development code. And I, and we've talked about going forward, it probably needs to be clarified. But I think that the development code would allow the public hearing to be either at the public, at the planning commission, or in front of the county board, that the important thing is that there has to be a public hearing before the ordinance is changed. So the planning commission took action very quickly. There didn't seem to be a lot of dissent or discussion that could have been, because there was no public meeting, there was no other input. But I guess I think now it's up to the county board to decide, do you want to hear the public hearing? Because when you, when you, when it comes to you for the final say of whether or not this is going to be changed, do you want to have the benefit of all that public discussion and all the presentation from, you know, each side? Or do you want the planning commission to have that? And then it just comes to you in the form of a recommendation, and then you base your decision based on the recommendation and really nothing else. So that's where I think we're at, and I think there is a lot of, you know, a lot of ability to do whatever the board wishes to do here today, procedurally.
You should do it, Tim. I, in all the years I've been on here, it has been the duty of the planning commission to hold public hearings in regards to these issues. And having said that, I've also sat on this board when, when the planning commission has, for example, made recommendations on something, and this full board, and not this present member board, but the county board has taken a position where we may have had additional questions as to what came about. Just because the planning commission holds a public hearing does not mean that the county board doesn't get a good file on what transpired at those public hearings. I mean, Tim's, in issues like this, it gets, it gets pretty detailed. I mean, we don't get word for word, but it gets pretty detailed as to what goes on to help us make, make our decisions. And oftentimes, or not oftentimes, but I, I know of a few instances where we have sent something back even to the planning commission for clarification. And in the worst case scenario, if we wanted to, if it, if it was really a public outcry for a change, it still would allow this board to even hold its own hearing, even after the, after the fact. But I think if we did not allow the planning commission to go through this process, we're undermining why we have them to begin with. We have the planning commission to do these types of things, and I think that the first step is to be there, and then if we're not satisfied, we have, and obviously we should have good reason to, to even send something back to the planning commission. But I certainly, I certainly believe that, that the planning commission is there for this purpose, and they're the ones who should hold the public hearing.
I also agree with that. I would also comment that we are all appointed to that board, so you're all free to sit and be present during that ordinance, or that public hearing.
Chair, I also agree that that should go to the planning commission for a hearing, and then come to us, and then we can take action. Commissioner Campbell said we could take action, we could have another hearing or other input. But I don't think we should reverse the process.
I agree with that also.
The potential applicant is here, would they like to make any comments?
Well, could I, before that happens, could I, so.
We'll give you an opportunity.
Yeah. Has there been a formal request to have a change to our ordinance?
There was a request made, Jenny reviewed it, and since it's a countywide change, it was not specific to a single property, she felt that the way the ordinance reads, changes of that nature can only come from the planning commission or the county board. So the planning commission can say, well, we think that this needs to be looked at, so we will actually have their own petition, set a public hearing, and hear what needs to be heard. Point out. Is it not automatic, is it not automatic that if a county resident applies for something that would require a zoning change of public hearing, isn't a public hearing automatic, or? Right, that's something that you should address.
Yeah, the question was that the county ordinance says that three people, three different kinds of people, three groups of people could petition for a change. The county board can petition for a change, the planning commission can petition for a change, and those wouldn't be formally, they wouldn't be in the form of an application with a fee, et cetera. Then the third group that can petition for a change is the property, the owner of the property in question. And that's where I say I believe that the, the language of the development code is somewhat unclear, and I do think we need to look at that and maybe make it, make it easier to understand. But there is no property owner in question when we're looking at a text amendment to an amendment of the whole development code. Maybe it should say a Clay County property owner, and be more, more general, or owner of the property in question, or owner of the property in question, something to make it more inclusive. But as it currently reads, it, it didn't seem like this was the proper channel for, you know, the, the, one particular Clay County resident to petition for a change of the whole code. So that's how, that's the procedural, and I think that's something that, going forward, we have to reevaluate and discuss. But that's why this came about the way it came about.
Well, I sort of probably jumped the gun there, because I attended the Gooseberry Township meeting when Mr. Baer presented that decision. So I came back, and I talked to soil and water conservation district, I asked Craig who does the inspection, and he felt there's nothing wrong with going to state, I talked to Tim to see, and he felt that wouldn't make any difference. So I said, well, why don't we get this straightened out, that we can go at state? But then I guess in the meantime, Mr. Baer also presented something to the planning commission. So it's, I don't know who was more instrumental in it, I'm sure they were, but I guess, why don't we want to straighten it out? But we still have to go with the proper procedure. No matter who straightens it out.
Yes.
Good. Tim, did you have some more?
I was just going to say, just related to the animal unit numbers, we haven't had the same state numbers. Our animal units have not, have never, to the best of my knowledge, represented the state listing of animal units.
How many counties go with that?
I can find out. But I have the 1981 ordinance here where our, the animal unit numbers are essentially the same as they were now. They were adopted, re-adopted or amended in 1986 that added one animal to it. Since that time, they have been the way they are, and have not created any issues for any feedlot owners or the county since 1986. So I guess I'm not exactly sure.
I don't want to hold Mr. Baer up here, but if we don't change anything, would that affect the request to increase their say?
No.
It wouldn't affect it?
Because in 1986, just before Hitterdall Hogs was proposed, Mr. Baer applied to try and get the animal units changed. It was denied at that time by the county board, and has not come back for any reason until today, until the last.
All right, Mr. Baer, you want to come up here?
Sure.
Give him chairs.
Should we stand here?
Oh, I bring some chairs around here.
Okay.
Thank you very much for allowing us to be here today. We submitted a petition for a text amendment to the code to the planning and zoning department that was submitted on April 15th, 2016. And in discussion with Jenny Smarja, she said that the petition was not appropriate because of the rationale that she just gave. So we did try to do this formally through the process of filing a petition for a text amendment to the code. And all we're asking is to have the county animal unit numbers be reflective of the state animal unit numbers, so that the regulated and the regulators are on the same page with regard to animal units. Because the animal unit number, this gets to the merits, but if an animal unit number is to mean anything for purposes of permitting, the animal unit should be based on a standard. And the standard, at least according to the state statute, this is just a publication, the Minnesota Livestock Producers Guide to Feedlot Rules, a publication of MPCA and Minnesota Department of Agriculture, they talk about the size of the animal feedlot, and they say the size of the feedlot is determined by the number of animal units. Animal unit refers to a standard of measurement, this is the key. Animal unit refers to the standard of measurement of the quantity of manure produced based on the size and manure production, and is used in Minnesota for permitting, registration, and environmental review process. The state went through an elaborate process in 2000, and I think Tim might have been involved or aware of that. But they amended the statute, actually, to put the animal units numbers in the statute. They held public hearings where MPCA provided their data, the Department of Agriculture provided their data, and they came up with the state animal unit numbers to reflect the scientific basis. Now, you might ask, well, we've gone along in Clay County for 30 years and no problems have existed. But there are problems. I mean, perception. Anybody knows, reading the popular press, that if you have 1,000 animal units, you're a CAFO, and these CAFOs are pariahs, basically, in our community. And if you have the different animal unit numbers, just for illustrative purposes, if a farmer has 3,000 piglets, basically nursery hogs, less than 55 pounds, under county animal units, that's 1,200 animal units. That's a CAFO. I mean, in the public's perception, it's a CAFO. But in the state animal units, that is 150 animal units. And the, the perception is, is that, you know, you have 3,000 hogs, you're producing 1,200 animal unit-like manure from that facility, and it needs more regulation. But it really is deceptive, because the manure produced by a piglet, less than 55 pounds, is much smaller than the manure produced by a standard animal unit, which is based on the measure of manure production by a 1,000-pound steer. So what we're asking is that the county dovetail with the state, so that those who are regulated, the farmer and the regulators, have a standard basis, that an animal unit is an animal unit for purposes of regulatory situations. That's what we're asking for, is some consistency in that. And we think that it provides some sort of, you know, certainty for the farmers to know that they, an animal unit is an animal unit, and they need not familiarize themselves with an animal unit for federal, state, county, township purposes. And the regulatory system is confusing enough the way it is right now, let alone if you have different animal units, you may have more confusion that inserts itself into the regulatory process. So we think that this is a, perhaps there have been no problems, but I think just because there has been no request made before, doesn't mean that it isn't a good idea to have the regulatory system streamlined to allow a producer to have the confidence to know that an animal unit for state is the same as for the county, is the same as for the township. And that's the argument I'll make for the township as well. And so that's, that's what we're, we're asking the regulatory bodies to adopt this standard definition of animal units, so that you have an animal unit based on the science that was protect, was produced for the statutory change in the state of Minnesota in 2000.
Did you have something?
I'm just agreeing with the presentation. I think what, what we're talking about is not necessarily increasing the amount of manure that the specific barn or any barns will produce, but by nature, a 300-pound sow is going to have more manure than a piglet. And so I think we're just, if we reclassify that, it's important.
Does the, does this proposed change, from my time being on the board, it seems to me that we often find more issues regarding new feedlot permits in Clay County than existing ones. And would it, would it change the way, or the criteria of when a permit would need to be applied for, for a feedlot at all in Clay County?
Well, the animal feedlots definitions that the county has in place right now allow us to see feedlots as conditional use permits prior to them getting very large. We would have to look at that.
And I'm not saying, I'm not saying that, that that would be a reason to shoot it.
it down. I'm just saying that sometimes if you, sometimes if you change one policy, you, you might also have to look at another.
And I look, if I, if I may, Tim, I, I did look at that, and at least my review suggested that there were two issues that were affected potentially by the change of animal units. First one is the number of conditional use permits that were be required. Because anything over 500 animal units right now requires, I think, a conditional use permit, at least the way I read the...
I think it's anything beyond 250.
Oh, it could be. Anything beyond 250 animal units requires a conditional use permit. So this would affect that provision because you now would have a definition of, say, 1,055-pound hogs would be 400 animal units, whereas the state definition, 1,055-pound hogs would be...
Fifty.
Fifty animal units. So there is that distinction. So there, there would be the, the conditional use permits. But here's the point. The conditional use permit is designed to allow the regulators to put conditions on potential problems, which are the problems with animal feedlots typically odor and...
Right.
Manure production. And if the animal unit doesn't reflect accurately the manure production, you're increasing the amount of conditional use permits that are necessary.
I guess my, all's I'm saying is, is, is there something that didn't, that could have gone on without a conditional use permit or needed a conditional use permit before, now under this scenario not need one, based on the changes that we're making? That would be, that would be the more, more of a concern to me.
On the size, it's, I mean, on the numbers.
Well, it, it's just that, and so, because I agree, the conditional use permits are, it is a process to say, this is what needs to be regulated. And I agree with that.
Yeah, yeah.
That makes sense.
I don't have a problem.
But what I want to make sure of is any change that we would make would allow somebody to be able to have something that wouldn't require a conditional use permit where you couldn't regulate it. That's, that's the concern that I, that I would have, are the animal units changing where somebody would fall below, um, the, the criteria to, to apply for a permit which then would, could have conditional use to it? That, that's, that's what I'm asking. And maybe, maybe it doesn't exist, but I, but I think it's important to know that.
And that's, that needs to be addressed in review.
And, and of course, that, that can still come out as part of the public process, the public hearing process. But I think it's an important issue. That's where the rest of the general public who are non-feedlot people, I think, I think everybody just wants to make sure that there's some sort of regulation, regulatory effort out there. And I think as long as we can provide that and still do this change, I don't see a problem.
The other point I just mentioned, the one is the animal unit on the conditional use permit. The other one that I saw when I looked at the ordinance was the setbacks. Because if you have over 500 animal units, setbacks are different than if you have less than a certain threshold. I, I, I would have to look at it again. But those are the two issues that I thought would need to be addressed by the planning and zoning to make sure that there is a full discussion about those issues.
But those issues, those issues, you, you wouldn't be opposed to, if those issues had to be altered?
No, 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 no.
That's not what you're...
No, 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 that's not, not, that's not at all. I mean, if the threshold...
Those would have to be addressed.
If the threshold for animal units or to conditional use permit needs to be changed, I don't have a problem with that. It's just, let's get the standard animal unit measure. Is that all that we're asking?
I, I think the, I think it's worthy of looking into.
Yeah, you're okay. Well, I think the question today then is just whether we want to do the public hearing or whether the Planning Commission wants to do the public hearing.
Well, I...
And it looks to me like everybody says the Planning Commission...
I highly suggest that we let the Planning Commission do what they're supposed to do.
Do their job, okay?
I have a question, though, on timeline, because these people did apply, or not apply, but the conversation happened before the last Planning Commission meeting. Now, all of a sudden, it's a month, we're a month out from our next planning. Does that, I mean, does that interfere with the timeline for you? Is that because we may be...
We'll just have to work with the process. And if it's, if the public hearing can be held at the next Planning Commission meeting, that's fine. We'll be prepared to present.
There's still time notification wise to, for public hearing.
Well, good. We'll just go.
You're gonna have the same situation with Goose Prairie, though. They have the whole public hearing.
Yes, exactly.
And the meeting is not the whole, two weeks from now yet.
To, to bring that issue to a head, and this is the effect that the county animal unit definition has. Goose Prairie just lifted those definitions wholesale from the county definition because the county was going to do the enforcement. And so that's, and not only did Goose Prairie lift those numbers, as flawed as they are, they also used those numbers to set a cap no larger than X number of animal units. So now you have a situation where a feedlot that has, you know, 2,000 hogs that are feeder hogs, they could be less than a thousand or less than, you know, a thousand animal units for the state purposes, but yet be prohibited from Goose Prairie because of the flawed animal unit numbers being used to calculate animal units. So that is, you know, it's sort of, it's an illustration of the exponential effect of flawed numbers in a ordinance where you have flawed numbers on animal units here at Clay County. It's taken by the township and then use those flawed numbers to set a cap on how many animals you can have on a farm. So that's the argument we're making. We're arguing to the, you know, the, the good sense, the good graces of the regulatory agencies to see the wisdom in having some consistency in, and some scientific basis for these caps on animal units. Thank you.
Do we, do we need a motion to forward this to the Planning Commission? Or what do we need?
Just to recommend a change.
Okay. Well, I'll make a motion to recommend that the Planning Commission holds the public hearing.
Second.
Any further discussion remaining? Call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Post.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you. I'm sure we'll see you again. Yes.
Ready, Chris?
Uh, just, just, come on up here.
Ready.
Okay. Next, we have Rhonda. We have a request to fill a financial worker position. Give us the back on that one.
Okay, yes, we do. And Larry is with me. Larry is the supervisor in that unit. We had a, yeah, a financial worker leave her position last week. It was an immediate resignation, so we are without that person and are requesting to fill that position. This is a position, again, in our income maintenance unit that handles the administration of our public assistance programs. And this position was in our family team, so processing the family applications. And we just need the position, so.
Second.
With back, with backfill?
Yes, with backfill, please.
Okay. Okay, we got a motion to fill the position with backfill. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay.
Thank you.
Next thing.
Thank you.
Did we have another thing?
Oh, we did have an agenda addition, and I apologize for that. I did receive an additional resignation yesterday. This is an office support specialist position supervised in a different unit, but also, or supervised by a different supervisor, but in Larry's unit. This is a position at our front reception area in our income maintenance unit. And she has given her two-week resignation. And again, this is a position that's, that's in the budget, and we just really cannot manage without it. So I'd be requesting approval to fill that as well.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Um, yeah, likely in this position, we wouldn't have backfill, but yes.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Got it.
All right. Thank you.
Eric. We're looking at advertise for County Road 95 grading project.
Good morning, Eric.
Morning.
Again?
Yeah. Yeah, as Frank said, here to ask for permission to advertise County Road 95, plan to open bids May 17th at 9:00 a.m. For those of you that aren't familiar with the project, it's a five-mile grading project just north of Moorhead from Cassat 18 to Cassat 26. The current road is gravel and chip sealed, and our plan is to salvage that aggregate and regrade the road and ditches with the plan of coming back and paving in 2018.
I move approval of the question.
Just for my own, has this, has this been in the paper already, or have we advertised this already? Okay.
Yeah, I...
I didn't know that was the same project or not.
Yep.
Okay. All right.
I didn't get it on the agenda for last week, so.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. All right.
We should have made it a little tougher on him this first time.
Well, I tried to get going, but I didn't get any other votes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Eric. Okay, we have a review of the county abatement policy. I'm sure you've all got a copy of that thing. Nancy. I think right now we've got a abatement policy whereby people can go back two years on their taxes if they find an error or something like that.
Yeah.
We've got a request for someone that wants to go further on that.
Mr. Chairman, can I start this? Because it was, I, I got this on the agenda.
Very good.
I had received a call from a longtime Clay County resident, and I'll, I'll say her name. It's Noreen Thomas. And those of you who are around extension will really know Noreen and...
The whole Thomas family.
Uh-huh.
The whole Thomas family.
Yeah, the whole Thomas family. And they're, um, they, they obviously have been around Clay County a long time, and, and they also, um, know, uh, know this, this system. But when she called me, she said that after a period of time, it, it was realized that the homestead classification wasn't what it was supposed to be. And so she said that she contacted the county and, and rightfully so, there was, there was our, our, they were told that our policy was that they could only go back two years. The problem with it is, is the, the error was not the error of the taxpayer, the error was of, of the personnel for the county. And it seems to me that, and I don't know when this was put in place and if I even voted on this thing when it happened, but, you know, I, I just want to state that a lot of people don't necessarily look exactly at the homestead. They look at their property tax, and they do it, and they pay it. And I'm assuming because there was a change in this, her, her taxes were slightly higher or somewhat higher. But the fact of the matter is, and, and this comes from a rural area of the county as well, in the, in the ag community, and they've heard, you've heard constantly over the last couple of years how mu, how it's been higher. So she could assume that to be, the last thing she's thinking is there's a clerical error that's impacting her taxes. She shouldn't have to be concerned that there's a clerical error that's impacted her taxes. It was an error. I mean, it's, yeah. But our policy only says that she can, that we can only go back and fix it for two years. In this particular case, she wants that third year fixed because that's how long it took to, to recognize the issue. Did I pretty much explain it?
Yep.
So...
So, was it the county's error?
Well, I can, you can let...
Yes, we're assuming that it certainly was something that happened.
It was the county's error, and this board has the authority to make that exception?
We would have to go against our own policy, right?
I understand that, but...
But we should.
We should, because we made the error.
But we should.
I mean, that's an enormous one.
The policy says one thing, but it seems to me it would be inherent that if the error were the county's error, that would supersede the policy, and the board could make that exception.
I agree with that.
Okay.
I so move.
I'll second.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. My question is, what if the taxes would have been too low? How far back can we go? If it's our error that we evaluated this property too low, and it should have been evaluated higher, can we go back? How far back can we go? Two years?
Typically, I don't know if we would do that. You know, if we find an error, we'd probably deal with it for that current tax statement. So I don't think we would go back and grab anything. We'd go forward.
I, I, I do thank the motion and the second for this because I think it's the right thing to do today, but, but I, I do want to make a comment in, in Nancy's report to us, and it's, in our current policy, it states, any clerical error carried for a number of years will be adjusted only for this two-year period in time. So I, I think we need to go back after today's action, know, and review that policy so that...
I was going to suggest that.
Yeah, so, so that's, so the, a clerical error is a clerical error if it's on the part of, of, of the county, that there shouldn't be a restricted time period. Hopefully, it's, doesn't take so long to get caught, you know? But in this case, because it was over the homestead.
Back in 1997, when it was put into effect, there had to be a reason. It must have, there must have been something. I don't know if there are anybody here from 1997, but all of us look so young.
Yeah. If you're any fourteen, two...
The statutes do allow current and two back. That's as far as it can go. So the policy that was created then just did current and one back. But statutes do allow up to the two additional years.
Which would have covered...
Yes. In her situation, yes, it would have taken in those three years.
All right, well, we'll, we'll vote on this one over by now.
Okay.
And that is the motion to allow the third year to be taken in consideration. All in favor?
Aye.
Post. Pass. Okay.
Can we, Nancy, going forward, can, can you maybe propose something for us that would put us into what the maximum state would allow then?
Yeah.
Language and then, and then what process we need to do to change our policy?
Yeah. I think there needs to be a little bit more detail to the policy, maybe some definitions as to what things mean. So yes, maybe in a week or two, you could bring back a revision for your to... Thank you, Nancy.
Yeah, thank you for your work on this and...
Thank you.
Very good.
We'll get it performed to her.
Thanks. I don't know. The money was, I don't have any idea.
Your money's right here. You've got the same.
Yeah. And just add an extra year to it.
I didn't even pay attention.
Okay, with that, we'll go into a request to increase detox capacity. Kathy and Troy.
Good morning.
Good morning, Kathy and Troy.
Would you give that to Kathy for me? Thank you.
Maybe all of you or know Troy is our new detox director, and I'll introduce our lead, our Ann, and she's sitting in the back there, Sarah. So she is our, our other new employee. So we have been, or I actually have been here before, and we talked about increasing our capacity for detox based on numbers. I'll give you some, some of the statistics that we've... Did everybody get a copy of that? Did everybody get a copy of that? So what we're seeing, of course, is the increase in the numbers of our, of our client admissions. And the statistics actually, when you see the smaller column there, number of clients not accepted, that isn't really an accurate number. We are fully aware that when we're full, we don't really have a good read on the number of clients that law enforcement could be taking to us, because they are aware when we're full, they're notified. So we don't have those numbers. We do know, sometimes, I think Troy experienced where we could have had seventeen clients at one time. We just don't have the capacity. So we're really seeing a lot, we're seeing some pretty high numbers, and we're more full, we're full more often, and having to turn away clients that we can't take, particularly these last three months. So the need is there. We just met with one of our contracted agencies in Fargo, who, you know, has expressed concerns in the past about, they have a lot of clients, more than they even bring to us, that, and we don't have beds, so they end up having to bring those clients elsewhere. We've also heard from law enforcement when we met with that group, and they also have many times that they have clients, and we're full, so they can't bring them in. So we're really seeing the demand.
When you say they have to take them somewhere elsewhere, where would they go to?
Well, sometimes they go to Sanford. Sometimes they go to the Fargo facility, which is not a medically-run detox facility. They don't have the nurses, licensed nurses. They do not have the medication protocols. They do not have the physician oversight. So it's a different level, and there's so many clients that need a higher level, where they need the nursing, and they need the medical oversight and the medications. So Fargo does not have that. So there is some other possibilities. You are aware, though, that the Fergus Falls facility closed last December, their detox facility, and so we're in conversations with Fergus Falls. We will be meeting with them in May, beginning of May, that first week, to talk about utilization of our facility, which they've expressed great interest in. So we'll be having a discussion with them about how that may look with the contract, whether they do a bed purchase, or whether they decide to just pay as the clients come in. So that will also be another resource for those clients in Minnesota. But as you can see with the expansion, we're really going to be needing the sixteen bed. There's no doubt about it with the numbers that we're going to be seeing. And then with, of course, the, you're all aware of the, you know, the overdose and the concern about, you know, all the drug use on the rise, we are also going to be, you know, a resource. They're going to need some plays for some of these clients that we're serving in our FM community. I've been to a number of meetings in regards to the concerns about, you know, the opiate use and the overdoses and detoxes. I mean, we're going to be a player in trying to assist in that effort in the community.
You know, Park Rapids is the next closest detox, other than the social detox in Fargo. So a lot of times, if we're full, we'd have to figure out how to get these Clay County people to Park Rapids if they have-
And who pays that?
If they're a Clay County client, we have to pay for that. So that's a concern, too. If we don't have the beds in the county, you know, we have to, we have to pay for the, well, it would be, you know, most likely, we would utilize the sheriff's department because they're part of the county. If we have a client that needs to be transferred, transported, well, that's problematic for them, and they're taking someone-
Two hundred mile round trip.
-you know, off of their services here that are needed, and having to transport, and that's a, you know, that's a lot of time for them.
And if they're full at St. Cloud? Yeah, you know, and I agree that it's the right thing to probably take this back to its original sixteen that we had, but I just, I think we need to caution ourselves here that when we enter into agreements with, I think first and foremost, our county facility needs to be able to handle our county population, right? To me, that's first and foremost. So, but when we, so when we start talking about extra contracts, whether it's with the city of Fargo, or Otter Tail, or whatever, my concern would be is that, that those contracts would be only to a level where we're confident that we're going to have enough beds for our own, because otherwise, we're going to get in the same situation potentially as our regional juvenile center, where we, you know, if we're full, we could end up sending our own county kids to another facility and having to pay a higher per diem rate there than what we do here. So that's my issue, and I hope that in this planning process, that when we're, I think it's great that we're partnering with Fargo or whoever that needs this, and I understand Fergus closed down, and they need something, and I think that's great that we're able to enter into a partnership there, but we need to make sure that we save enough for what his, our historical trend is, you know, so that we're not setting our own way.
And currently, Mr. Campbell, that's, we do try to save, when we're at eight, we do try to save some beds, you know, just a couple even for Clay County-
Clay County, yep.
...residents, just so we aren't turning away our Clay County residents. And sometimes that's affecting, that's where you can see the average census, if we're holding those beds, you know, that affects that. So yes, we were at sixteen bed before. We do need to go through a relicensure process with the Department of Human Services and also the Department of Health, I believe. Mary said it would be a ninety dollar per-bed increase, so, you know, it's not a whole lot of additional funds that would be required for that licensure. We have been sixteen bed in the past, so I think, you know, the facility is, there wouldn't be such an effort to relicense us because they're familiar that we had sixteen in there, met all the requirements, so it will be a process.
Where are we at now? How many beds do we have now?
We have sixteen. We actually have the sixteen beds in place, we just don't utilize them at this time.
License for ten.
But we license for ten at this time, yeah.
Right, okay.
So we'd have to relicense for the sixteen, and then we can utilize those beds. Our staffing is, you know, currently we have two per shift, which we had worked up to, and with the complexity of the clients we're seeing, we're really anticipating we're going to need, if we have sixteen, you know, pretty complex clients, we're going to need probably an additional staff person. So we will be looking at, you know, those needs as well. I'll be coming back next week. We have a number of variable hours, tax, LPNs, and RNs. We only have eight regular staff right now, which isn't really a lot, but we have about twenty variable hour staff. So we could really utilize the hours that we're using with variable hour and move those into the regular staff. So it shouldn't be a budget impact, plus we'll be receiving the additional revenue as well. It's three-twenty per day, that's our rate right now. We haven't raised that rate in-
So who would you receive the additional revenue from?
Well, we'll be seeing the additional revenue from the counties, particularly from the east.
But if we use it, then you would, there would be no additional revenue.
Only on our-
Unless they're built.
Yeah, only on our, only on our beds, but there's, you know, historically, we've got room for others, so.
And the other counties, you know, pay, as well as our two contracts on the Fargo side?
And right now, didn't you say that we are holding, when we get to that number eight, that we're not accepting out of county, correct? So that's revenue that we're losing anyway.
I'll move.
But go on to sixteen, that gives us not real-
Yes.
No, I agree.
Extra revenue.
I'll move to approve the request.
I'll second.
Any more to add to this? More discussion? Not? Call for all in favor of increasing it to sixteen?
Aye.
Close. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Want to move on to the next one right away?
Okay.
My next request is, we had interviews for our nursing director. She, the current one is retiring, as you may know, kept up about that. She'll be done the first week of May, and so we had just internal interviews with internal candidates. And as you can see on the agenda information, the first candidate that we offered it to has thirty-plus years in public health. We don't ever see that. We don't ever get, rarely, if ever do we get anyone with public health experience. So she can really walk in, she understands all the program areas, because she's from a Minnesota public health agency. There's a difference between the, Minnesota, so she knows all the Minnesota programs that we utilize. And she has been a public health director, she's been a manager, public health director, and also a community health services administrator. So she really understands the level of administration that's required. She's supervised staff in the past year, so she, she has twenty years as a, or twenty-five years as a public health supervisor, including ten as a public health administrator, CHS administrator. So she comes with, you know, obviously quite a breadth of background, where she can really walk in and, you know, and jump in and do the job. She just needs some orientation to the Clay County process and our Clay County community. So it would be a great benefit for me, having someone that really doesn't need a lot of training, which we would anticipate someone coming in with no public health background, background, and training would be huge. So this is a gift for us, especially given the fact that we still continue to have problems recruiting RNs. It requires an RN with a PHN certification. So, and she is currently working in one of our programs. She's going to be, coming up a year, working in one of our direct case management programs. So my request, as you can see there, is the grade eighteen, which is what the PHNs are, or the, I'm sorry, I did put grade eighteen.
Yeah.
I apologize, that wasn't grade eighteen.
I think-
My error. Sorry about that.
I don't think grade eighteen goes that high.
I was just thinking, oh.
Grade twenty-two.
I apologize. That is an error. It's twenty-two. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And, but the salary that I listed is correct. So I apologize about that, the grade.
Mr. Chair, has this been through the pick committee?
It's Darren and Brian and I had the discussion about this salary placement because of the-
If they don't agree, where it goes on to?
Yeah, they agreed, they both agreed, so we did move it to the pick committee.
Mr. Chair, then I move to approve the request.
Second.
And I do have a comment. This is greatly reflected at the shortage that we've talked about for a long time, and RNs are in very, very short supply everywhere, I mean, from Fergus Falls to here, and it's not going to get any better, so I have confidence in this request.
Since this is a current employee, you have to backfill this one?
Yes, and you approved that backfill, and I previously came to advertise internally for that, but yes, I would need to, I would need to advertise and hire for that.
Okay. Got a motion to offer grade twenty-two, step seven. All in favor?
Aye.
Close.
Thank you.
Thanks. Anything else?
I think that's it until we see you at ten.
Okay, very good. It's getting close. Okay, committee reports. Grab.
Me first, then. Okay, let's see.
Your turn this week.
We had a pick committee meeting last week, and our topic of discussion was the pay situation for the administrator. Didn't, Darren, did you guys talk? I didn't hear anything this morning. Was there, you know, on Brian's situation, was there any issues? So, okay. And what, what did we change it to that the pick committee for?
Thirty-one.
I think grade thirty-one was there.
Yeah. Grade thirty-one and step-
It was step eleven, I believe.
Step eleven. No. The pick committee did it at this point, because we'll look at it again when his review is up in August.
Basically, what we did was we took it off of the old grid and put it onto the county grid after reviewing the PDQ and doing some market study on other county administrators in the area, and went through the same processes that we would go through with everybody else within the county, came back onto the county grid at grade ele, uh, grade thirty-one, step eleven.
Okay. Okay, so that's what we accomplished last week, a pick committee meeting, and they say then we'll talk more about it at Brian's review in August. And let's see, we had another interesting jail finance committee meeting this morning, and maybe I'll let Kevin, you know, address that, since he's, I wasn't here last week for the meeting, so. And then I had, yesterday I was in Minneapolis for an AMC conference planning committee meeting, and that was interesting, and there's, the conferences in, at the Hyatt in Minneapolis this year, and so we've got lots of work to do to plan that program, and we'll be meeting some more sometime in the future. But we did get a lot accomplished yesterday, so that was it for me.
Okay. Wayne?
Tuesday, April nineteenth, local advisory council for adult mental health, general business, presentation by Lynette Sewell of the Clay County Social Services Department. The presentation was on medical assistance access and what it involves. It was very informative. Then we had consumer concerns and agency reports from Lakeland Mental Health, Solutions Behavioral Health, A Place For Hope, and several members of A Place For Hope attended the mental health day on the hill, and several of the local advisory councils, consumers also attended the St. Paul event. Another agency reports from Vocational Rehabilitation, Community Behavioral Health Hospital, Clay County Public Health, Mobile Crisis Unit, and Gulf Harbor. On Wednesday, April twentieth, Clay County Collaborative Governance Board meeting, general business, report from the collaborative coordinator, and all is in good order. Review the 2016 fiscal year budget. We reviewed the fiscal year 2015 collaborative report that will be sent to the state on April thirtieth. Went over the work plan for 2017. This included all the entities participating in the collaborative. All of the work plans were accepted. We verified the contract for the local collaborative time study coordinator, and we did the same for the Clay County coordinator, Carolyn Sternod. Thursday, April twenty-first, local advisory, pardon me, Lake Easi Regional Library Executive and Finance Board meeting, general business, financial report, all was on the right track. We presented a 2017 preliminary budget, and we're looking at an overall increase of two percent from each of the signatories. And as I stated, this is a preliminary request and budget. Director's report. And then on Friday, April twenty-second, Lakes and Prairies Board meeting, general business, and as Jenny is our chair, I'll defer to her to report on this. And last week, I mentioned I did copies of risk indicators from the Minnesota Early Childhood Risk and Research Report that are reported on from the local advisory council for children's mental health, and you can take a look at this at your leisure if you would. That's all I have, Mr. Chair.
Hey, Grant.
It's great.
I don't have to do it again, though.
Thank you. Sorry. All right. Last week, I went, I went and met with Brian, and we were in St. Paul. I want to thank Brian for taking the time to go to St. Paul. We met with Penny Demko from the Department of Revenue regarding several questions that deals with potential sales tax collections, and if there was a county sales tax, a lot of issues, things, what would be exempt and those types of things, what would be raised, potentially raised. And we asked for some clarification of why, why there were discrepancy in numbers, and we got good answers as to why that had happened. I know, Commissioner Mojo, you had specifically asked a question about ag-related stuff, and all of that would be as it is today, it would be exempt. Anything that's involved with production of product would be exempt, is basically the way she put it. We can provide a, we can get a list from them of all of the, they give a breakdown for what RDOs or the, you know, any of those places that sell stuff, what, obviously, there's certain things like garden tractors and things that are, that it wouldn't apply to, but, so we got some really good information there, I think, and Brian, and we'll probably- to, but, so we got some really good information there, I think, and Brian, and we'll probably tell you too, that we felt really good coming out of there. Uh, yesterday, we had our, uh, our jail construction meeting, and, um, we got our first look at some numbers, uh, from, um, our construction managers after they had received the information from our architects, and, and their preliminary numbers are, are coming in a little bit higher than what, uh, our number was, uh, but there's, uh, we're sending that back for some clarification, and, and they felt that that could come down, but, so it's, it's a little bit more than the thirty million dollar number right now than we're talking about. Uh, but at this point in time, it's, um, we'll, we'll get a better, um, better number three weeks from now, I think, 'cause this was their first crack at it. Um, the jail finance committee, uh, met this morning again. We continued to, uh, look at, um, different, the different scenarios, um, and how, you know, we, we know that there's, um, uh, the need for a, obviously, the new jail and, and the law enforcement center, we've been talking about it here, um, at a board meeting, and, and how do, how do we present that publicly? And I think it need, you know, we've come to the conclusion that we need to educate the entire county on, on the need for all the facilities. And, uh, and so how the, um, how the, um, proposed, um, referendum would be, um, I think the, I think it's important that they know that both facilities, um, need to happen. And so, you know, there's, certainly it's the, uh, opinion of the finance committee that, that they are a bundled project, and we need to try to work that, that out, but, um, there's, there's still more work done on it. We're looking at, um, taking the original estimate of the LAC and the jail, and we're putting numbers to it using the sales tax, and, and hopefully, uh, we're gonna be able to have some numbers shortly that would show the public, this is what it, this is what it will be if it's, if it's with referendum for a sales tax, and this is what it would be on your property tax with no, with no referendum. Uh, so we're, we're getting to that, that stage now. It's, it's, um, we have a really, a really complicated, um, project here that we need to try to figure out a way where we're gonna be able to, uh, explain it to the public in a reasonable format that can, that doesn't take an hour to try to explain to everybody, because it's, um, it's, it's, we need to shorten up our, our presentation.
Yeah, just to interrupt you, I know what I mean, just a lot of times, you know, when we talk about this jail, we keep on saying jail, you know, and I, I look at it more as a correctional facility, and I think we're changing, should change some of the way we look at that, you know, 'cause if we look at a jail, you know, we put in a criminal, we don't do anything with a criminal, after six months, he comes out a criminal.
Yeah.
You know, so I think we should look at it more as a correctional facility, or whatever you wanna call it, you know, it's just, what we wanna build there is something to rehabilitate our criminals, that they come out, um, productive people of Clay County, you know, that they're accepted, that when they come out, we don't call them, there's a criminal coming out, you know, we won't call them a citizen of Clay County, so. I mean, sometimes, you know, our perception of what, what is this building that we're putting up? Is it a jail, correctional facility, or what it is, you know, it's, um, just my thought on that, that, excuse me for interrupting you.
Okay. Well, even in our committee, it's, it's, it's referred to as a correctional facility, so.
I'm glad to see that.
Yeah. Um, that's all I have, but there's, we'll have a really busy week the rest of this week, too, with more jail stuff and other things coming up.
Sorry to interrupt you there.
No, that's fine.
Jenny?
Thank you. Last week, I had, uh, the final round of interviews for Lakes and Prairies for the executive director. Uh, I also had a planning commission where we did talk about the animal unit piece, and because I was in executive director interviews at the same time, I was not able to be part of the discussion, but they did issue another, um, gravel pit permit. Thursday, I attended the cemetery mitigation for the FM diversion, it was a first meeting. Uh, there is some transition, uh, with some people for the core, uh, employment issues, um, so it was kind of an educational meeting for those newer people coming in for the mitigation piece. The first official meeting won't be until May. Friday also, as Commissioner Ingersoll said, had the Lakes and Prairies Annual Meeting. It was at the Marriott, and I'm also pleased to announce that the interim director that has been for the last six months was announced as the new, uh, executive director, Laurie Schwartz. She is a longtime employee of Lakes and Prairies, and she will do great things for them. Yesterday, I attended the Lakeland Mental Health Meeting. I had the finance meeting before, and one thing, they're recommending for all the counties, no additional increases for the county allotments that they are paying, partially because there is some excess non-designated cash, which we decided to put, um, two hundred additional thousand dollars of that into the capital fund, because there are some office needs at Moorhead and Alex that will need to be addressed in upcoming years, they're running out of space at those. And as you've probably heard me talk about, uh, the psychiatric issues with access times continues to be an issue, especially in Moorhead. And so an additional two hundred thousand dollars of that excess cash was put into the opportunity fund that will go to, uh, fund new staffing in the psychiatric. It is one thing that's interesting about that, is there's an enormous shortage, but they do advise people, as you're bringing new psychiatrists on, to budget for a hundred thousand dollar loss for each person, which is interesting. We also then had, uh, staff recognition for staff members that have been there for a long time, and, uh, then had a luncheon for them. Last night, I also did attend the County Fair Board in Barnesville. It was just, uh, a regular business meeting. That concludes my reports.
Okay. I guess, uh, I started out Tuesday with the PEC committee, which Grant has already talked about, where we're trying to get the one grid system, I think, in the county, we've got, we've got several different grids, you know, we're trying to get everybody placed into a county grid system, that everybody goes by a certain level. Wednesday, Historical Society, had a couple of meetings there, well, not really a meeting. The one thing at one o'clock was a presentation on an exhibit they're gonna have next year, the St. John's Bible, and I, it, uh, it is just so interesting what they're gonna be doing with that, that was, that presentation, that Bible, it was a very interesting presentation. And then at the meeting at four o'clock, we just, we discussed the Darwin legalities, gift acceptance policy draft, it's a regular, good meeting there. Thursday, in the morning, I went to a criminal gang, uh, presentation put on by, uh, public, um, let's see, uh, by Rhonda. Rhonda put that on, I think that's gonna be presented again, uh, this week sometime. It is a very good presentation. If you haven't seen that one, I would recommend in, uh, attending it just to see the gang activity that's going on in the Clay County area itself, and what they're dealing with, just, uh, all the drugs and gang activity going on, it's very interesting. I mean, we've got the showing there where you can sell certain types of drugs down in Minneapolis for fifty bucks, up here, you can get two hundred dollars for them, so it's a good market up here. So we must have more money up here, or something, I don't know what the deal is, but it's a very good presentation. Um, that afternoon, at one thirty, Dave Overbow and I went up to, um, Ada for Agsia Recreation Trails Committee, where we went through some of the maintenance procedures that's going on. And I don't know if you remember, last year, we approved to dissolve that thing, and then we had bills to pay to take care of that. I think it was around thirteen thousand was our part of it. I think we're gonna get about nine thousand of that back, so they put in a grant to the DNR, and, um, we're gonna get sixty-five percent of it back, so that's, finding some good news, there was some money coming in here, so, I mean, I mean, we'll get some money back, we already spent it, so not really money coming in, but it's, uh, we're gonna get some of it back, so. And we took care of some of grooming issues that, uh, who's gonna do it and stuff like that. Um, after that, Thursday afternoon, I went to MetraCock, where we presented the final draft on, uh, personnel manuals and administrative policies. Uh, they're also talking about the Cheyenne Corridor Study over in West Farnham. They also, we had a good presentation from, uh, from the seventy Hickman from North Dakota on a mock presentation, we're looking at the MetraCock going to over two hundred thousand once the two thousands, two thousand and twenty census comes out. There's a good indication that we're gonna go into a, a different category, get different type of funding and stuff like that, and, and what has to be done to certify us as a, as one of those agencies, and she gave a good presentation. Uh, yesterday, oh, Friday, I went with Senator Ekin and, um, Representative Paul Markort. I visited, did three town hall meetings at Yule and Holly and Dilworth, and, um, I think they also went to Barnesville, I didn't go there, but, uh, very good questions, very good presentations, and, uh, tried to get some indication of the jail, you know, whether they're gonna, I get, I know you guys were down there talking about that, you know, and, uh, they're really looking at it, um, at the mental behavior, the behavioral issues on it, trying to present it that way, and, um, I think I gave them a few ideas as far as what our problems are and stuff like that, and they seemed very receptive to that, and I think they're gonna keep working on that, pretty good. A lot of issues on the jail came up, a lot of issues on the agriculture, high agricultural land, there's, um, tax and stuff like that, I think Ekin and, uh, Markort both have bills in there to change that to fifty percent. I think they got a bill in for a hundred percent, but I think they're looking at possibly getting fifty percent on school referendums. Um, yesterday, you had a breakfast meeting, um, with the Historical Society, uh, for, for volunteers, they, uh, recognized their volunteers there, so. And I had a meeting with Brian and discussed certain issues, so, very good, that was it. Brian?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
You got one minute, okay.
Excuse me, well, I'm trying to make it real quick. Uh, I did travel to the St. Paul, I had a meeting up at Chisago County. Bruce Missel and I, we're going to talk mostly about the behavioral health and the, and the, um, oh gosh, the, the institution that is there, and how they were interacting with the institution as far as how they were going to handle their behavioral health issues within their jail, their new jail, to the opportunity to, their whole jail, their, their, and I'll call it a jail, 'cause that's what it is, a pocket facility, and then talk about their new correctional facility and how they're gonna handle the, the, uh, the behavioral health issues. And then he'd also, uh, set up with their lobbyists to go in and make some rounds on it, and so that, we got cut short on the others, and then we spent the whole entire afternoon at the Capitol, I, I didn't know we have quite an extensive, uh, drop in things, so we visited with Representative Bob Barrett, the same one we visited with before, and lobbyist was along with us. He's the author of, of our joint bill, we visited with Logan, who is the chief of staff of Senator Stumpf, who is the chair of the Capitol Investment Bill. And then we visited also with, uh, we also visited with Representative Markort for quite some time, and Senator Ekin's office, we weren't able to, uh, get in to see Representative Lean, uh, he was not in his office at that moment. Uh, so we really had some in-depth conversations about the program, and frankly, I'd scheduled this time earlier just to be available, because April twenty-first was the deadline for the financial bills coming in, and what the consensus was of the, uh, people that we talked to, the lobbyist, uh, and, and the various people, was the fact that if, if the bonding bill is closer to what the governor's request is of one point four billion dollars, we've got a fairly good chance. If it's closer to what the House wants, starting out at six hundred million, we don't have much of a chance. So, uh, we'll just have to keep working at it and doing the same thing, I guess, we've been doing, and they said it's really up to the leadership of what they negotiate out now, and, and then see where, where the projects lie, so, um, that's about it. And then, um, Commissioner Campbell reported on the Thursday morning meeting, um, Department of Revenue, we really, we needed to do that, we needed to have clarity as to what, uh, what, what was affected, how they were affected, the, the different products that are sold, who was exempt, who wasn't exempt, and then the accuracy of the information. We were going off of, uh, what was put together by Department of Transportation when they authorized, or when the state legislature authorized, uh, counties to enact, to have some sales tax, and that's the figure we were working off, and that was not near as accurate as the Department of Revenue, and they're the people that work with it, so we have to trust their figures now, I think. So, attended new, higher orientation, I spent about forty-five minutes, uh, with those new employees in the morning when we have that new orientation. I met with Lori and Kathy, uh, reference a, uh, a, a claim to the State Auditor's Office, reference, uh, some loss of funds that we had over at Detox here about six months ago. Um, and, uh, the chair already visited about our communication. Uh, we had that correctional facility meeting yesterday afternoon, and, and that's been already reported on as well. And then the, uh, correctional facility finance meeting on this morning, and, and, uh, like Commissioner Campbell said, there was, uh, a decision that we need to keep the projects as two projects. Um, and I think as we move forward, it would be really nice if we can have booter dialogue with this board, so that hopefully the board is all on board of how this is going to be approached as well. And we have, like, just a reminder of the training event that we have today, so.
Thank you. Any further, Jenny, or?
No, thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just one, uh, just one quick thing. Um, I received here, uh, and we all received the annual summary of the county write-offs for two thousand fifteen.
Oh, yes.
Um, I, I would just like to put out a request that, um, how, to find out how that compared to what was in their budget, uh, for that purpose. Um, 'cause every year, they actually budget those write-offs as part of the levy process.
Yes, they do.
And I'm just curious if this came in real high or real low to, to budget? That's, that's all I'm requesting, maybe you can...
Sure, I can visit with Rhonda about that and Heather.
Or Sandy or somebody?
Yep.
That's our turn.